Javier, ¿estamos todos listos?
Sí.
Madam presidenta, no veo a Raheem Shepherd. Pero sí, ahora mismo. Supongo que el cuarto, así que trataré de averiguar dónde está.
Gracias. Si pudieran contactarle, sería genial.
Sí.
Está bien.
Recorrido en progreso.
Buen día. La audiencia de la Junta de Apelación del estado de Boston para el 9 de mayo de 2023 se está llevando a cabo. Esta audiencia se está llevando a cabo de acuerdo con las reglas aplicables de la Ley de Audiencia Abierta, incluyendo las reglas actualizadas que se han implementado por la legislatura el año pasado. La nueva ley permite que la Junta continúe su práctica de llevar audiencias virtuales hasta marzo de 2025. Esta audiencia de la Junta se está llevando lejos a través de la plataforma de evento de webinar Zoom. Esta audiencia también está siendo transmitida en vivo. Para asegurarse de que esta audiencia de la Junta sea abierta al público, los miembros del público pueden acceder a esta audiencia a través de teléfono y videoconferencia. La información para conectarse a esta audiencia está listada en la agenda de audiencia de hoy, que está publicada en la página de notificaciones públicas del sitio web del estado bostoniano. Los miembros del público entrará en la audiencia virtual como asistentes, lo que significa que no se verá a sí mismo en la pantalla y serán mutados a pesar de que no sean administrativamente mutados cuando se pida que comente. Los miembros de la Junta, los solicitantes y sus abogados o representantes participarán en la audiencia como panelistas y aparecerán junto con los materiales de presentación cuando hablen. Los panelistas están fuertemente animados a mantener el video mientras presentan al board. Como con nuestras audiencias en persona, comentarios y apoyo se seguirán con comentarios en oposición. El orden de los comentarios es el siguiente: funcionarios electos, representantes de funcionarios electos y miembros del público. La presidenta puede limitar el número de personas llamadas a hacer comentario y el tiempo para comentar según las restricciones de tiempo requieren. Por esa razón, la Junta prefiere escuchar a los miembros del público que son más afectados por el proyecto, es decir, aquellos individuos que viven cerca del proyecto. Si quieren comentar sobre un apelio, por favor clickeen el botón de levantar la mano a lo largo de la parte inferior de su pantalla en la plataforma de webinar Zoom. Clickeen de nuevo y su mano debería bajar. Cuando el host ve su mano, recibirá una solicitud de desmudarse. Selecciona sí y podrá hablar. Si están conectados a la audiencia por teléfono, por favor presione * para levantar y bajar su mano. Deben presionar * para desmudarse después de recibir la solicitud del host. Aquellos llamados a comentar serán obligados a decir su nombre y dirección primero y luego pueden proporcionar su comentario. Para el interés del tiempo y asegurarse de que tiene suficiente tiempo para hacerlo, por favor levanten su mano tan pronto como el señor Stembbridge lee la dirección en el registro. No levanten su mano antes de que la dirección relevante sea llamada o el host de audiencia no sabrá a qué hora llamar a usted. Estas instrucciones serán repetidas durante toda la audiencia. Está bien. Señor Stembbridge.
Buen día, Madam presidenta.
Buen día. Señor Shepherd.
Buen día, Madam presidenta.
Buen día. Señor Valencia.
Buen día, Madam presidenta.
Buen día. Miss Better Barazza.
Buen día, Madam presidenta.
Gracias. Miss Weewell.
Buen día, presidente.
Buen día. Señor Langham.
Buen día, Madam presidenta. Madam presidenta, lo siento.
Gracias. Buen día, señor. Está bien, estamos todos listos. Lo haré a la vez con el señor Stembbridge.
También buen día a los miembros de la Junta. El primer elemento de la negociación es el aprobamiento de la audiencia de marzo 16 y marzo 28.
¿Puedo hacer una votación?
Voto a aprobar la medida de esta audiencia.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Gracias. Señor Stembbridge.
El próximo elemento de la negociación. Lo siento.
Voto. Gracias.
Lo siento por saltarme adelante.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Está bien, señor Stembbridge.
Ahora, en la agenda.
Aquí vamos.
Las extensiones para las 9:30. El primer caso es BOA 114226, la dirección siendo 81 Prince Street. Esta es la primera solicitud por extensión. La decisión va a cumplir el 14 de mayo de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 14 de mayo de 2024.
Está bien, veo al señor Zizula.
Buen día, Madam presidenta, miembros de la Junta, el abogado Nick Zizula, McDermott, Quilty y Miller, aquí a cargo de la demandante, buscando una solicitud de una extensión de un año, como acabamos de leer en el registro. Este proyecto es para permitir un cambio de ocupación de cuatro apartamentos en una tienda a cinco apartamentos. Hemos estado trabajando con ISD sobre algunos tipos de necesidades de código de edificio y conformidades para la conversión de este uso comercial a un uso residencial en esta unidad, así que requieren un poco más de tiempo para obtener el permiso de edificio de ISD, lo que es por qué estamos solicitando esta extensión. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Alguna pregunta de la Junta? ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Hacer una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 14 de mayo de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Gracias. Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
Ahora tenemos el caso BOA 803394 con la dirección de 246 a 248 Dorchester Avenue. Esta es la cuarta solicitud por extensión debido a que cumplirá el 11 de mayo de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 11 de mayo de 2024. Es el.
Oh, lo siento, señor secretario.
Está bien. Es el solicitante o su representante.
Sí, señor. Lo siento. Abogado Nick Zizula, nuevamente, McDermott, Quilty y Miller, aquí a cargo de la demandante. Este es un artículo 80, gran revisión de proyectos en el sur de Boston. En realidad, es un hotel de ocho pisos con 159 habitaciones. Esto es, creo que el señor secretario dijo que es el tercer o cuarto solicitud de extensión. La razón detrás de eso es que el desarrollador todavía está en el proceso de obtener, ya sabes, financiación final del proyecto. Es un hotel. Sabes, financiación y permiso ha sido retrasado debido a las complicaciones todavía por COVID-19, la cual fue la razón para los primeros pedidos y ahora los aumentos en los costos de construcción y tasas de préstamos comerciales para un hotel han sido difíciles de obtener. Pero la industria del hotel parece estar rebajando, con suerte, después de experimentar algunos desastres muy graves, específicamente en Boston. Así que hemos experimentado más retrasos en conseguir esos compromisos financieros en lugar de finales de construcción, pero la demandante está comprometida con el proyecto y está esperando que con este tiempo adicional puedan asegurar el financiamiento necesario para obtener el permiso de edificio. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Alguna pregunta de la Junta? ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Hago una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 11 de mayo de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Ahora tenemos el caso BZC 32903 con una dirección de 188 High Street. Esta es la sexta solicitud por extensión, que cumplirá el 6 de mayo, que cumplirá el 6 de mayo de 2023. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 6 de mayo de 2024. Y la solicitud fue enviada antes del día de expiración.
Señor Maranti.
Sí, buen día. Gracias, señor Stembbridge. Buenos días, madres presidentas, miembros de la Junta. Mi nombre es George Maranti. Soy abogado con una ubicación de la empresa 350 West Broadway en el sur de Boston. Represento Cedar Development y su principal David Gwinick y David Mateo. Mis clientes están ingresando como compradores de este proyecto aprobado y buscan la última extensión de la liberación de la zona. Como historia procedural breve, este asunto fue originalmente aprobado en 2013 como un hotel de 14 pisos, 50 kilos de boutique. Fui el abogado del proyecto cuando fue aprobado. En ese momento, había cuatro acontecimientos significativos que determinaron que mantuviera los aprobados de la zona del proyecto actual y también la prueba de que se está solicitando hoy como una última extensión de la liberación de la zona. Había dos litros. Uno fue un apelio a la aprobación del proyecto, que mantuvo la aprobación de la zona del proyecto como una cuestión de ley y que no se resolvió hasta 2018. Y luego hubo otro litro que se resolvió en junio de 2022. Entre la resolución de esos dos litros, por supuesto, hubo la pandemia y como cuarto asunto, esta Junta tiene, como señaló el señor Stembbridge, otorgado extensiones formales, más recientemente en el año de enero, pero otorgó la actual extensión de un año. Mis clientes, como dije, han ingresado como compradores del proyecto, comprometieron planes a ISD el año pasado para cambiar el proyecto al reducir su altura y cantidad de habitaciones. Esta Junta, actuando bajo la autoridad de su Junta de Control de Tubos, aprobó esos planes revisedos en septiembre del año pasado y el BPDA otorgó el aprobamiento final de diseño en diciembre de 2022. Mis clientes tienen financiación de construcción planeada, anticipan poder lograr el entorno en el verano y solicitan a la Junta hoy por una última extensión.
Gracias por proporcionar ese detalle, miss Maranti. ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Hacer una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 6 de mayo de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
Ahora tenemos el caso BOA 11029221 con la dirección de 837 Saratoga Street. Esta es la primera solicitud por extensión, que cumplirá el 22 de junio de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 22 de junio de 2024. Es el solicitante o su representante del presidente.
Sí, buen día, madam presidenta, miembros de la Junta, Richard Lynn, abogado de la empresa 245 Sumner Street, en el sur de Boston, a cargo de la petición Nelson de Oliveira. Madam presidenta, historia breve, este proyecto fue aprobado por la Junta en 2021 para cambiar la ocupación de tres unidades a un edificio de seis unidades. El solicitante está en el proceso de finalizar el PP de diseño. Un número de problemas estructurales y de código de edificio tiene que ser abordado y anticipa hacerlo relativamente pronto y, por lo tanto, la solicitud por la extensión es de un año para permitirle completar eso.
Está bien, gracias. ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Hago una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 22 de junio de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
Ahora tenemos el caso BOA 1183158 con una dirección de 99 Maverick Street, que también estará representado por el señor Lynn.
¿Tenemos la primera extensión y la fecha?
Eso sería bueno. Gracias, Madam presidenta. Esta es la primera solicitud por extensión. La decisión cumplirá el 25 de agosto de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 25 de agosto de 2024.
Gracias, señor Lynn.
Sí, nuevamente, buen día, madres presidentas, miembros de la Junta, Richard Lynn, con una ubicación de la empresa 245 Sumner Street, a cargo de la petición. Similar a la última, esta Junta votó a otorgar liberación en 2021 para este proyecto para desarrollar un vacío en una edificio multifamilia. Esto también involucra un número de problemas de permiso, incluyendo la revisión del sitio para un volante, para un transformador, así que estamos solicitando más tiempo para finalizar esos problemas con ISD.
Gracias. ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Hacer una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 25 de agosto de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
Ahora tenemos el caso BOA 1110007, la dirección siendo 47 Condor Street. Esta es la primera extensión, esta es la primera solicitud por extensión, que cumplirá el 2 de junio de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 2 de junio de 2024 y ese será el señor Lynn también.
Está bien.
Por último, muchas gracias. Nuevamente, madres presidentas, miembros de la Junta, Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, a cargo de la petición. Una vez más, la Junta otorgó la liberación en junio de 2021 para este proyecto. Este es un edificio de siete unidades con 11 parques de espacio local ubicado en Condor Street. El financiamiento para este proyecto está casi completo y finalmente podrán finalizar su permiso en BP de diseño y, con suerte, recibir su permiso en los próximos meses y, por lo tanto, solicitando una extensión de un año.
Está bien, gracias, señor Lynn. Señor Stembbridge, lo siento. ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Hago una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 22 de junio de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí, señor.
Gracias. La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte, señor Lynn.
Muchas gracias.
Ahora tenemos dos casos de extensión compañera. El primero es el caso BOA 903635 con una dirección de 235 Leyton Street. Junto a eso, tenemos el caso BOA 903636 con una dirección de 237 Leyton Street. Esta es la tercera solicitud por extensión, que cumplirá el 14 de junio de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 14 de junio de 2024. Es el solicitante o su representante del presidente.
Buen día, madam presidenta, miembros de la Junta, abogado Lawrence Cantino con una ubicación de la empresa 245 Sumner Street en el sur de Boston, aquí a cargo del dueño Dana Antonucci. Estamos solicitando una tercera extensión en este asunto. Mi cliente fue impidiendo por COVID al principio y luego el costo, el aumento del costo de construcción y financiación. Este es un edificio de hogar ocupado, que está siendo subdividido para su familia para luego construir un vivienda de dos unidades al lado de sus padres. Así que solo estamos solicitando una extensión de un año más en orden de que mi cliente finalice todo desde el 14 de junio de 2023 hasta el 14 de junio de 2024.
Gracias. ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Acción para otorgar la extensión para ambos casos hasta el 14 de junio de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
Ahora tenemos el caso BOA 1137713 con la dirección siendo 375 Cummins Highway. Esta es la primera solicitud por extensión. La decisión cumplirá el 24 de marzo de este año. El solicitante está buscando una sexta extensión. Es el solicitante o su representante del presidente.
Sí. Buenos días, todos. Buenos días, madam presidenta, abogado John Pugini, a cargo de la demandante para 375 Cummins Highway. La solicitud de esta extensión, este proyecto fue originalmente propuesto bajo un desarrollador diferente. Fue vendido a mi cliente en agosto de 22. Desde entonces, hemos estado pasando el proceso con el BPDA para hacer varias revisiones bajo el anuncio de cambio de proyecto. Esos redesignes incluyen reducir el parqueo de hasta 61 parques de espacio a 44 parques de espacio, aumentar el espacio abierto, aumentar la rentabilidad, relocar el shelter de autobuses existente y la cobertura de la esquina asociada, ampliación y reparaciones, y también proporcionar un nuevo estacioncero para los personas que viven en esa comunidad. Estamos programados para ir al BPDA el 1 de jueves por la semana que viene y luego volveremos antes de que ustedes estén en la Junta solo para obtener la liberación de la zona por los cambios que hemos trabajado con el BPDA.
Está bien. Y para confirmar, están buscando una extensión de seis meses desde marzo de 2024 o desde hoy.
Yo diría que si pudieran obtener, quiero decir, solo obteniendo los dibujos de construcción porque han sido diseñados, tal vez un año desde hoy, pero no va a tomar mucho tiempo. Sería, o incluso un día de marzo, eso está bien. Quiero decir, un año de marzo no es mucho tiempo.
Está bien. Gracias por confirmar. ¿Alguna pregunta? Con eso, ¿puedo hacer una acción?
Hacer una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 24 de marzo de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias, todos.
Ahora tenemos el caso BOA 1027373, la dirección es 171 a 179 Bowden Street. Esta es la segunda solicitud por extensión, que cumplirá el 15 de mayo de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 15 de mayo de 2024. Es el solicitante o su representante del presidente.
Sí. Mi nombre es Matt Mueller, aquí con Jennifer Hoff, Hugh Architecture, con la ubicación de la empresa 181 Bowden Street en Dorchester. Nuestro cliente ha sido afectado por COVID y estamos muy cerca de enviarlo. Tenemos la autorización de la Agencia de Agua y Suelo de Boston y los aprobados del BPDA y todos los dibujos están listos. Solo estamos esperando algunos saldos finales de Public Works, así que solo necesitamos ese pequeño poco de tiempo para poner todo en y enviarlo.
Está bien. Gracias, señor Mueller. ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Hago una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 20 de mayo de 2024.
¿Es el 20 de mayo o el 15 de mayo?
Lo siento, el 15 de mayo, lo siento.
Gracias. ¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
Ahora tenemos el caso BOA 1015905, la dirección siendo 296 Columbus Avenue. Esta es la segunda solicitud por extensión debido a que cumplirá el 15 de mayo de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 15 de mayo de 2024. Es el solicitante o su representante del presidente.
Sí, solo me hice un panelista. Jeremy, cuando se convierta en un panelista, puede desmudarse de sí mismo y hablar del caso. Gracias, Jessica. Hola, Jeremy, ¿puedes oírnos?
Hola, lo siento. Problemas técnicos aquí. ¿Puedes oírme ahora?
Sí, buen día.
Mi nombre es Jeremy Coe. Soy el dueño de 296 Columbus Ave. Estoy solicitando una extensión por otro año debido a problemas relacionados con la salud, problemas financieros, pérdida de trabajo, etc. No he podido obtener el material de protección de los incendios preparado para mover adelante para obtener el permiso, así que necesito un poco más de tiempo.
Está bien. Gracias, Jessica. ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 15 de mayo de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
La última extensión a ser solicitada es el caso BOA 1096128 con la dirección de 10 Rockland Street. Esta es la primera solicitud por extensión. La decisión cumplirá el 21 de mayo de este año. Si se concede, la nueva fecha será el 21 de mayo de 2024. Es el solicitante o su representante del presidente.
Sí. Buenos días, madam presidenta, miembros de la Junta. Este es Andrew Litchfield, 10 Rockland Road, Rockland Street, lo siento. Estoy buscando una extensión de un año. Acabo de completar la revisión del BPDA, las plantas de agua y agua. Estoy esperando recibir la respuesta de la examinadora de la planta acerca de los documentos de permiso que he enviado a ISD.
Gracias. ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Hago una acción para otorgar la extensión hasta el 21 de mayo de 2024.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Gracias. Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia. ¿Perdí al señor Valencia?
Lo siento, lo perdí. Sí.
Gracias. Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí, señor.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
Ahora pasaremos a la audiencia programada para las 9:30 AM. Antes de ir allí, ¿hay alguna solicitud de renuncia o renuncia en este momento?
Señor Stemb... Señor Stembbridge, es Richard Lynn, 94 Morris Street, por favor.
Y ese es un caso de compañía, señor.
Sí, es, lo siento.
Gracias.
Sí, hay dos listos para 94 Morris. Por lo que creo, es código de edificio.
Está bien. Estoy esperando a que el señor Stembbridge lea el registro.
El primero es el caso BOA 1285218, con sí, la dirección siendo 94 Morris Street. El segundo es el caso BOA 1285217, la dirección también siendo 94 Morris Street. Y, lo siento, alguien estaba hablando.
Sí, señor Lynn.
Sí, gracias y buen día, madres presidentas, miembros de la Junta, Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, en el sur de Boston, a cargo de la petición, solicitando un control corto para este asunto. Tenemos un par de temas que nos gustaría revisar con algunos de los abusos y sentimos que el control nos daría tiempo para hacer eso.
Gracias. Javier, ¿cuál es la fecha disponible siguiente?
Sí, madam presidenta, el 11 de julio, la fecha disponible siguiente.
Señor Lynn.
Está bien, está bien, gracias.
Gracias. ¿Alguna pregunta de la Junta? ¿Puedo hacer una acción?
Gracias. Hacer una acción para renunciar al 11 de julio.
¿Puedo hacer una segunda?
Segunda.
Señor Stembbridge.
Sí.
Señor Shepherd.
Sí.
Señor Valencia.
Sí.
Miss Better Barazza.
Sí.
Miss Weewell.
Sí.
Señor Langham.
Sí.
La presidenta también vota sí. La acción lleva. Buena suerte.
Gracias.
Si no hay más renuncias o renuncias, entonces vamos con el caso BOA 1447927, la dirección siendo 23 Bennington Street. Es el solicitante o su representante del presidente.
Sí, gracias, señor Stembbridge. Buenos días, madres presidentas, miembros de la Junta, Richard Lynn, con una ubicación de la empresa 245 Sumner Street, en el sur de Boston, a cargo de la petición. Richard Lins, business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Mauricio Menendez. Madam Chair, so relatively straightforward proposal involves an existing mixed-use building with ground-level commercial space and two residential units above. Our proposal would involve a complete renovation and rehabilitation of the existing structure and to change the occupancy to three residential units. Because this is located in the community commercial sub-district, residential use on the ground level and lower levels is not permitted, and this would therefore then be considered a three-family row house. Therefore, we do require relief for that use. If we jump to the next page, you probably can see a better street view of what we're looking at. Sort of a mixed bag here on this section of Bennington Street. We do have a good amount of upper-level residential, and as you can see from the next slide, the location for this particular site does not really set up well for retail or residential use. There's been an attempt to try to have some type of retail use just go in this level. There's a good amount of retrofitting that would be necessary to the building in order for that to occur, and therefore, a proposed residential use seems to be the best fit. The exterior of the building would have a complete facelift as well. We would maintain all of the existing details, however, that aluminum siding, et cetera, would all be removed. If you want to scroll down a little further, I can get into the floor plans briefly. We don't really change much with respect to the footprint of the building. Lower level is used for storage and mechanicals. This is in a floodplain, so therefore, there's no palpable space allowed in this lower level. Next slide, please. Unit 1 is oriented as a three-bedroom unit. Again, this is all existing footprint, existing space currently zoned for the commercial use but to be used as residential. Next slide, please. Second level pretty much mirrors the first level, again, a three-bedroom arrangement with the one bedroom to the rear, two in the front. Next slide, please. Our third level's a bit smaller, so that is actually set up as a two-bedroom. We do show what we label as a roof deck, but that is actually above the height of the second level, the older addition that is on the building, so that roof deck doesn't sit any higher than the second level currently. We're not proposing a roof deck above the upper level. Next slide, please. I believe just showing some of the structural plans, so again, relatively straightforward proposal. This also is subject to G-Cod. I know that we do have the no-harm letter and the letter from the Boston Water and Sewer. Those are included in the presentation as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions or address any comments to the board.
Thank you. Any questions on the plans, Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes, I do have a plan. Because I didn't see an existing first-floor unit in terms of the commercial layout, is there a reason for the change of use? Like, is there any forms of hardship not being able to lease the commercial unit?
Yeah, if we jump back, yeah, if we jump back, I'm sorry, if we jump back to the street view, we can see that this commercial space, actually, you know, for, you can see the building to our right does have some commercial use going on at the lower level. I believe that's a smaller retail store with some other ancillary uses. But if you see the front steps going up into our building, the building itself actually really presents as a row house residential building, unlike a lot of the other street-front lower-level retails that you do see along this section of the.
I understand that. I was just wondering why the G-Cod views it that the commercial space is not, you know, are you able to lease it or what's just?
Yeah, the owners not had very good success in finding tenants to operate in that location based on how it's oriented.
Okay, I just wanted to understand what was the reason for the change. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May we have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I want us to have a Butters meeting for this project on November 29th, 2022. No Butters joining meetings. The applicant also met with Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in December and January. The group voted to support the project. Our office is unaware of any concerns at the moment, and at this time, we would like to defer all judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sebastian Para. I'm the East Boston Support City Council of Gabriela Coleta. Based on Maverick Central Neighborhood Association's vote, the council would like to go and support this project. Thank you so much.
No additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion, a motion of approval.
May I have, do you need, do you need to wrap this under you?
I don't, I believe, no, it's a pretty straightforward project, and they're going to pretty much renovate to kind of the existing character of the, of the building.
Hey, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shep, uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA, case BOA 1438826 with the address of 86 St. Petal Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, First Floor, South Boston. With me today is the architect, Matthew Ryder. Madam Chair, would you like to address the G-Cod issue first?
You can do them together.
Okay, great. Okay, so the G-Cod, so I just want to start off, so both letters have been submitted for the G-Cod. No harm and compliance has been submitted to Boston Water and Sewer. I'm sure Christian Simonelli can testify to that upon the ending of this presentation. Madam Chair, members of the board, this proposal in front of us today is a change of occupancy from an 18-person lodging house to 13 residential units. Footprint of the building will remain. By way of history, I think it's important to understand the history of this. This building has been in the same family ownership since the mid-1980s and has always been operational as a 13-unit apartment. In fact, building has been taxed as a 13-unit for quite some time. Applicants were provided documents since the 2000s by the city of Boston showing that they've been taxed as 13 units, but the owners also believes that it's been leased since the 1980s where they would be in tax from. There were major structural issues that needed to be addressed with this building, and when the owner filed for the permit, the lodging house occupancy was first discovered here. Now, the owners are taking this opportunity to simply clean up the jacket and to upgrade all the life safety requirements, including alarm and full-fire suppression system. The building has no record of a lodging house with the Licensing Commission and has never had a yearly inspection. There's been conversations with the BPDA, and the applicant has agreed to enter into an affordable housing agreement committing two of those units as affordable. Pages 3 and 4 will give you a comparison of the existing layouts and the proposed layouts, as you will note, very similar in shape, in size, in dimensions. Pages 5 through 7 and 14 through 19 will provide you a little bit more in-depth of the actual floor plans. Pages 8 and 10 and 20 through 23 will provide you with the elevation drawings, those are comparison of the existing elevations and what's being proposed, showing that the elevation will not be changed. As far as the layout, the basement space will continue to be storage. First floor will consist of three units made up of a two-bedroom, one studio and a one-bedroom. Second floor and the third floor will consist of three units each, two-bedroom and two one-bedrooms. Fourth floor will consist of four units. There will be a two-bedroom, a one-bedroom, and two studios. The one thing that you will notate that the new proposed roof plan will consist of a moderate expansion of the headhouse, which will not be visible from the street. This has gone through landmarks and has been approved. So again, in concluding here, this is simply an application to clean up the jacket, rehab the building that has serious foundation issues, and to bring it up to compliance with building code as well as life safety standards. So at this time, I'm gonna pass it over and pause for a minute for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Any questions from the board?
The only question I have is for the architect in terms of the required two modes of egress. Can they, can they speak on that? Because I only see one mode, one egress. And this is four stories.
Yes, so, right, ma'am? Yes, this is Matthew Ryder, thank you. So, yes, so per the building code, because we are under four units per floor for the first three floors, and it's a sprinkler building, we're only required one mean of egress. And on the fourth floor, obviously, we have the main stairwell, and then we have our second means is via a fire balcony out to the adjacent building, which is currently in place and is being replaced to meet current fire code as well.
Okay, great. Thanks for explaining that.
Thank you.
No further questions?
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question for Attorney Spitz. So you said that two of the units will be designated as affordable units?
Yes, correct, yes. So we began the initiation conversation with the BPDA, and we further discussed that the owner's willing to commit two of those units. So if approved, we'll reach back out to the BPDA and enter into an affordable housing agreement that will have to go back in front of the BPDA and board for approval.
Okay, so then this is voluntary, right? It's not, obviously not subject to inclusionary provisions or?
It's quite interesting, because, you know, what is required is any time that you're constructing 10 units or more, and this is an interesting scenario where it's been operational as 13 units. You know, our first interaction with the BPDA was that we were going to be willing to commit to the affordability component of it, providing two units.
Okay, and have those details to be worked out with the BPDA, such as which units, the AMI percentage?
Yes, typically rentals is approximately about like 60 to 70% AMI, and there won't be any two units on the same floor. But again, we'll work out those details with the BPDA is, you know, we tried to have that discussion, and they said upon approval, we'll work it.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? May I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Maggie Van Squire. I'm from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. We held an Butters meeting for this proposal, and this applicant has also been in contact with the local civic association. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Simonelli. Thank you. Chair, can we raise hands? Thank you. Javier, just a point of clarification. Do we need two votes on the G-Cod and?
We don't need to have two votes, you can do it all at one.
Great.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, and Councilor to go and get support.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with two proviso, one being that two units be designated as IDP units, and the second one being that there would be no building code relief.
And can you include the G-Cod? Or do, is that necessary, Javier?
Yes, yeah, to just approve for G-Cod and to approve the applicant for two provisos submitted by Anthony.
Yeah, so can you add that, Ms. Barbaraza?
And to also approve the G-Cod.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1444961, the address of 354 East Street. This is also in a BPDA Article 80 budget. Is the applicant for their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with business address of 350 West Broadway. Madam Chair, members, this is a matter of perfecting the record of a case which was already approved by this board. This application was approved by the ZDA on December 6th. The decision was filed by the ZDA on January 20th of this year. I noted when drafting the decision, I should have noted before drafting the decision that the ISD plant examiner had missed two violations on the original zoning refusal letter. I brought this to the attention of ISD, and the second zoning refusal letter was issued citing the two violations originally missed, which are insufficient additional lawn area per dwelling unit and insufficient open space per dwelling unit. The purpose of this hearing is to approve, hopefully, and add to the package of zoning relief granted to the project last December these two missed violations.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation previously, this is approved by the board. We had the applicant re-flyer Butters within 300 feet and remaining in contact with the Civic Association. I'm unaware of any concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Oh, go ahead.
Yep. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Vanessa from Councilor Flynn's office. Council President Flynn would like to go on record based on a thorough community process and work with neighbors to address quality of life issues like the one-to-one parking ratio, public realm improvements, and construction concerns. The team worked closely with neighbors and civic organizations to establish 70% of affordable housing for the project, with six income-restricted units and opportunities for working families to remain in the city. Councilor Flynn respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing sentiments of Councilor President Flynn's office, as well as acknowledging the communal effort that went into drafting Article 68. The council does feel that there are projects that do warrant merit, this being one of them. This is, and as the proponent did state, this was a case that was approved, previously approved by the board. Echoing sentiments, Council Flynn's office, Council to go and recognize support.
Thank you. Mark, are you looking to get testimony here?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. My name is, and members of the board, my name is Mark Corn. I'm an attorney at the firm of O'Hagan Meyer. My business address is 111 Huntington Avenue. I represent six members of the community, the South Boston community, Cynthia Levy, John Flaherty, Linda Flaherty, Robert Flaherty, Anne Marie Flaherty, and Kathleen Sawyer. My clients are among dozens of members of the community who have submitted letters of objection to this project. There's, I am counsel to these six party, these six community members in pending litigation at Superior Court with respect to both this project and the project, the adjacent project at 363 E Street. I'm simply, given the, given the status of the case where we have pending litigation with respect to both of these cases, and particularly where this, this is likely to be, to be, to change, the pending litigation, I just wanted to note that my clients are still, still continue to object to the project, as do many members of the, of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. No additional raised hands. Would the applicant like to address that before we proceed?
Morning, Madam Chair, George Maranti. No, I don't think there's any need for me to address that. There's pending litigation, I will acknowledge that.
Thank you. Any, any final questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with the listed provisos as indicated in the BPDA board-approved memorandum, including the inclusion of six IDP units and a ground-floor community space dedicated for the general public.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.[1746.40]
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1210175 with the address being 37 Pearl Street. Is the applicant for their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz, Maranci, business address 168 East Street, Portview, South Boston. With me today is the architect, David Creed. Now, this is a proposal which changes the occupancy from a two-unit dwelling to a six-unit dwelling by renovating, preserving the existing structure and by way of a two-dormer addition to the existing structure in a three-story rear addition. The rear addition will extend the existing structure by approximately 53 feet and 5 inches, long, and approximately 38 feet and 6 inches wide. There will be eight off-street parking spaces in the rear of the property accessed via an existing driveway. Property is located within the 2F 5000 sub-district. The total lot size is 9,721 square feet. The units will range from approximately 1,462 square feet to 1,595 square feet. The existing structure that's being preserved will contain units one and unit two. Basement space will be allocated for storage. First floor plan will consist of living area, dining room, and kitchen. Second floor plan will consist of two bedrooms and a bathroom. Third floor will consist of an additional bedroom and a bathroom. The addition will contain units four through six. It will also be connected to, via an existing structure, by a staircase in the middle of the two buildings. Basement will consist of an office space, media room, and a utility room for units three and four. There will be a walkout means of egress for unit three and there will also be two window wells for unit four. First floor will consist of units three and four, living area, kitchen, dining room, and a one-bedroom. Second floor will consist of five, units five and six, two bedrooms and a study. Third floor will also be allocated to units five and six, living area, dining, and kitchen. Parking will be accessed by an existing driveway on the right-hand side of the property. There will be eight parking spaces in the rear of the property. We have four zoning violations. We have narrow side of the driveway as the required opening is 10 feet and we have nine feet, 5 inches, which is pre-existing. The multi-family use is forbidden, but this use is consistent with some of the recently approved projects in the neighborhood. Floor area ratio, we have a violation. What is compliant is a .5. We're proposing a 1.06. And again, the last violation that we have is height. We're compliant with the feet, but excessive in the stories as we're proposing three stories. At this time, I'm going to pause for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. Was there any, when you reduced the number of units from eight to six, was there any discussion about removing some of the parking to more of a one-to-one ratio?
No, the neighborhood, the neighborhood was actually asking for more parking than what we could actually provide. That was one of the, you know, critical factors when going through the community process that we were experiencing.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cochrane with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process. Our office held an abutter meeting in February of this year and two of the seven abutters in attendance supported the project while others expressed concerns that were resolved. The local civic association's general membership voted to support the project on an 11 to 10 vote line while the planning committee on the civic group voted against the project three to seven. We'd like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cochrane, you mentioned issues that were resolved. Can you just mention those briefly, if you're aware?
It was just the general issues with traffic and congestion and stuff.
Okay.
And there was also just some general confusion, but it was just resolved during the meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who raised hands? Demaris, are you looking to get testimony here?
Yes, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm from Opry. I live at 16 Big Green Street, directly behind the proposed set. We are opposed to this project and also directly affect our little daughter, environmental noise pollution. And we also purchased this home because of the ratio of single-family homes to multifamily homes in the neighborhood. And this is going to directly affect us.
Thank you.
Okay.
John?
Yes, my name is Jonathan Meel. I'm at 18 Victoria Street. I'm next door to David, to Demaris. And with her and her husband and daughter, my property is probably most impacted by this new development because I, from my kitchen window, I have a perfect view of this property and it would be my preference to have a four-and-eight situation. Because in the 40 years that I've lived here in this house, I've seen traffic get worse and worse and worse. People will live in the South End or South Boston and they'll park their cars on Victoria Street where we have no person parking and then Uber will lift to wherever they want to go. Car students from outer state will park their cars on Victoria Street and leave them there for a couple of weeks until street sweeping comes up. So I would like to see a four-and-eight just because I have had to make my own request to the, your board to put a driveway in between my house and my neighbors at number 20 simply so we can have a place to park. I go out at night and frequently when I come home, I don't have a place to park on my street.
Thank you, sir. We under, so you're concerned about the parking and the number of units. Got it?
I have no additional questions.
Great. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with two provisos. One being with VPDA design review and the other is to reduce the parking so, so to allow for more open, open space at the rear.
Is that in conjunction with BPD review or...
Yes, so that's with VPDA site review, site planning review.
BPDA site, okay. Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, case is BOA 144-8154 with the address of 183 Fuller Street. Is the applicant for their representative present?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andrew Litchfield with 183 Fuller Street. What I'm proposing is a two-family on a currently vacant lot. The two-family will consist of two three-bed, two-and-a-half-bathroom units, roughly 1,440 square feet and 1,475 square feet total. The basement will be unfinished. We have two parking spaces that comply with the parking ratio. The lot size currently is 4,250 square feet. So I'm in violation of the insufficient lot size of 5,000 square feet. The side setback is supposed to be 10 feet. I am at 7.2 feet and the front yard setback is 15 feet and I am at 5.2 feet. That is to the porch and then to the house. It's about 10 feet. It's pretty much in line with the neighborhood and the characteristics of the neighborhood. Mostly two families and three families around this area. The first floor will be kitchen, living area. Second floor will be two bedrooms and a bathroom, an office in the front. Then the third floor will be the primary suite with an en suite bathroom.
Any questions from the board? Okay, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 183 Fuller Street had an abutter's meeting, well, they had two abutter's meetings, one on May 4th of last year and the other of March 15th of this year. They met with the Dorchester Unified Neighborhood Association that concluded that penny investments did not and has not provided plans, showed how to propose, how, propose to address the violations listed on the zoning analysis citing the following violations. They cited the insufficient lot size, excessive FAR, insufficient yard setback, and the insufficient front yard setback. So they also stated that they will not be providing support at this time. They've also voiced a few concerns. In addition to that, they voiced that the plans provided are not to scale and they do not provide renderings, images, evaluations or view, elevations or viewpoints, therefore, are not allowing for complete and accurate review by the Neighborhood Association. And out, from that point on, they also, sorry, from that point on, they also state that the plan describes a two-and-a-half-story dwelling with two dormers on a sloped roof. They believe that this would provide headspace for one full floor, not a half-story, therefore, the structure would essentially be four floors, four floors per unit, one underground with a basement, bedroom, and three stories above ground. The applicant voiced concerns about the timeliness of the feedback from the Dunn Association, stating that he believes had these recommendations come sooner, he would have had more time to work with the Neighborhood Association to address these concerns. He states that he has reached out to Dunn on multiple occasions to get their feedback on this project and did not receive the recommendation for opposition until last week. So as of now, our office has two letters of support and one letter of opposition and we are deferring our judgment to the board on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rowan's office?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayame Dele. We welcome the official City Councilor, Brian Morell. In regards to 183 Fuller Street, we had received the two letters of support and then the one letter of opposition from Dunn. Speaking to the process that we went through, we actually never met with the developer at all, nor did we receive a copy of the plans. In addition to that, when speaking to Dorchester Unified's leadership, we also found out that some of their plans seem to be missing from the overall planning document and they also did not address the zoning violations.
So please don't repeat what Mr. James just repeated. We did hear that already.
Apologies. With that being said, we'd like to go on record in opposition to look out for further community engagement.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, we're taking public testimony first. We'll circle back to you.
Alfonso, the testimony? Alfonso, sir?
No, I'm sorry. That was a mistake. I don't...
He's here for another case. Any other raised hands?
Olene?
Hi, my name is Olene Griffin. I do live at 76 Morris Street. The construction is like correctly behind me. I do feel that he should have it. I agree with his, because we do need more living space on that street. Like, everybody's like literally on top of each other over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Litchfield, do you want to address that concern?
Yes, I just wanted to address the community process. I was in front of the board back in September for a three-family project that was denied. Again, I got my feedback from the Dunn Association the day of the hearing. This time it was yesterday. I pride myself on working with the community and the community process and at the, both the abutter's meeting and the Dunn, Dunn Association meeting, there were no questions, no concerns. No one, everyone said, oh, we like it. And, you know, so that's why I continued with the process. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, I share that with you.
Well, and can you speak to any of the substance of the concerns that Mr. James read through?
Yeah, so he mentioned a few, well, he mentioned the two-and-a-half stories. The two-and-a-half stories is, is based on the living square footage of that third floor. So it's half the living square footage of the other floors. If that was shared with me in any of the meetings with the Dunn Association, I would have gladly clarified that as well as any missing documents. I'm just looking at my plans right now and, you know, that may have been just a miserror. I do have my architect, Eric Zacherson, here if you want to speak on that briefly, but he said there were some pages missing, but I believe that that was just an error on the, on the actual plans and no plans were actually missing.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like a motion to approve with the VPDA in San Antonio.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 144-6415 with the address being 544 River Street. Is the applicant for their representative present?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney David Silin with Allen Law, PLLC, business address 3 Pearl Street, Suite 9, Stoughton, Mass. You're on behalf of Francisco Camilo and Camilo Liquors. Camilo Liquors is seeking relief from the Board of Appeals to change the occupancy from a store to a liquor store for conditional use. Client has a liquor store, Camilo Liquor Store, which is at 7 Edgewater Drive. Is being evicted from that property at no fault of his own. The owner of that property wants it for a different use. He's recently purchased 544 River Street, which, adjacent to 7 Edgewater Drive. It's literally right next door. I think the front doors are approximately 15 to 20 feet apart. There's only one liquor store in this neighborhood. He's been in business there for 10 years. The status quo will prevail in the neighborhood besides the proximity location to such. Since there's only one liquor store there for a decade, nothing's changing about the use. So there should be no adverse effect to the neighborhood. There should be nothing detrimental that comes of this to the neighborhood. General purpose and intent of this relocation is for the public good and will allow a small business owner. He lives in the city of Boston. He's been in that neighborhood operating a liquor store for 10 years to stay in, in business as he's no longer going to be at the old location. Again, I, like I mentioned, he had purchased the new, the new store directly next door. There won't be any nuisance to the neighborhood. No change in vehicles or pedestrians. This new property provides adequate facilities for his use, his proposed use. He has traffic pickups in place, building sweep security, the same, the same he had with his prior property right at the store. Therefore, requirements of Section 6-3 for special permits have been met. Community meeting was held. There was no, no one, no one really opposed it. And again, Mr. Camilo, you know, small business owner, lives in the city, has been operating this liquor store directly adjacent to...
Thank you. Can you confirm the hours and, and what, is there any size difference between his current location and this proposed location?
I believe they are comparable in size. Mr. Camilo is actually on here. If, if we could probably maybe go to him and he can answer that question as to hours and size.
Yeah, hello?
Yes, good morning.
Yes, hi, good morning. My name is Francisco Camilo. Yeah, the hours of operation is Monday to Saturday, 9 to 11. And Sunday is 2 to 11.
And is that the same as it is currently?
Yes, same time that it is now, yeah.
And what about the size of the two?
Yeah, the new building is kind of way smaller than the one that we have right now.
Smaller, okay.
Yeah, it was smaller, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
If you'd like, I can show my show on the property outlines for both of them.
We can't share screen, but any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, just to be clear, this new store will replace an existing store. Is that correct?
Yes.
Probably during the, Madam Chair, probably during the community input, I'd like to hear what the opportunity is.
Of course, yes. We'll definitely get to that.
Madam Chair, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I also have questions, but go ahead.
Keep going. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, so on this view right here, the current one will no longer be in business?
I believe he said he's losing his lease. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's why we move in this though, yeah.
Right, so you're replacing businesses?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the use of the current one? Is it closed down? Is it?
It's a real insurance company.
Okay. Ms. Bedaberaza?
I'm just now, now it's clear in terms of, I was a little, I was thrown off in terms of where the siding was for the project. But I do see that the basement has a six-foot clearance. You're not using the, is the basement being used for storage?
Yeah, for starters, yeah.
Just for storage, okay.
Yeah, for starters.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, maybe we can jump to community process since I think that's of concern.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant had attended community meetings on March 5, 2022, with the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council Public Service Committee, April 5, 2022, with the Edgewater Neighborhood Association, as well as in a Butters meeting run by the Mayor's Office on May 17 of 2022. At these meetings, residents as well as members of the Church of the Holy Spirit show concerns regarding the establishment's proximity to an ABCD facility, senior housing, as well as issues with loitering and noise services from patrons of the Camilo Liquors. Parking as well as maintenance of the area were also concerns. As there was opposition for the proposal, there was also shown, there was also support shown at the Neighborhood Association meetings and Butters meetings. The Mayor's Office would like to highlight that the applicant lived in the community and has reached out to continue conversations, as well as agreed to work with all residents and neighborhood businesses to help address any issues they may have, including maintenance of the sidewalks slash areas around Camilo Liquors as well as church grounds. So at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter. Thank you.
Mr. James, are you aware of any issues with the current location on Edgewater?
We have not received any opposition or any concern for the location this time.
Any other testimony, Jessica? Nope, sorry, if I do, um, second. Okay, do you have a hand raised here? Cam, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, I'd love to.
Okay, can you state your name and address for the record and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
My name is Camilo, but no familial relations. It's actually spelled differently, just a coincidence. I work about 100 feet from the liquor store. I have learned, I've grown to like and know more about this scope over the last few years as we both served together on the Mattapan upon sit Small Business and Security Council sort of meeting, a group that we've put together that's run by Reverend Zanetta Jones. He's been instrumental and active the entire time in making the community better, and I really appreciate it. I am one of the buildings that many people, that, I work inside one of the buildings that many of the people that say that there are a lot of issues due to the liquor store should be affecting. And while there are liquor bottles, that is not necessarily his fault. And he does do a very good job in trying to make the place better and safer. Overall, he's been a real asset to the community, and I'm really glad I met him.
You're in support or opposition, just to confirm?
Strong support of it, not to mention his.
Thank you. David, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that my client has also already.
He's the attorney, not.
He's already received approval from the City of Boston Licensing Board and the ABCC. He's already been through that entire process for moving the license from the.
Were there any other raised hands, Jessica?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Just to be clear, Madam Chair, so whoever can speak to this, were there any, has the business been cited for any violations in the past in terms of, from the city?
No, no violation. We don't got no violation in the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, go ahead, Giovanni.
Thank you. Well, I'm just looking at the proposal. The proposal is not creating a new impact. It's just continuing what was already there. Even the place is going to be smaller for the new liquor stores. So with that, I would like to put forward the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedaberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1436463, with the address of 132 Central Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, I am, Mr. Stenbridge.
Mr. Small?
One. Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. I have a business address of 51 opposite road. Today, we're here seeking relief to erect a three-family dweller on a vacant lot. The zoning subdistrict here is a 1F. And our lot size, 1F 6,000, and our lot size is 4,390 square feet. The violations are as follows. It's a forbidden use of the three family in this zoning subdistrict. Our lot width requirement is 60 feet. We have 58 feet. Building height requirement in this zoning subdistrict is two and a half stories, 35 feet. We are at three stories, but we are below the required foot footage, which is at 32,2. Front yard is insufficient. The requirement is 25 feet. We have 16 and a half feet. And side yard violation is that requirement is 10 feet, and we have approximately four feet. And the rear yard is requirement is 40 feet, and we have approximately 13 feet. Madam Chair, the unit sizes are three-bedroom, two-bath. On the first unit, approximately 1,400 square feet. Unit two is three bedrooms, two baths, and approximately 1,400 square feet. And unit three is a two-bedroom, one bath, at approximately 1,300 square feet. I'll stop there and entertain any questions that the board or anyone may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, yes, a question. I'm looking at the Google Maps, and it seems that there is a big tree in the back of the property. And if that is correct, what are the plans for that tree?
Derek, I don't think there is a tree on the property. But I don't think that there is. I was at the property yesterday.
Okay, maybe that is in what picture?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one question. Are any of them?
Sorry, just checking. Isn't that a tree now? That upper right-hand corner?
It says 42 inches tree at the rear property line.
Mr. Small?
I didn't hear what the question was again.
Well, Mr. Valencia's question was around the tree. You stated that you didn't think there was a tree.
I didn't, I was at the property yesterday. But if that is the case, I think the tree will be removed and then we will plant another tree of smaller size.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Are any of these units going to be affordable units?
The owner is currently preparing for his family to move to this country. So they will be family, it's family-owned because the property owner owns the house next door at 130 Central Ave. And he's building it for family members. Okay.
Also, are you proposing a parking space where it says number one? Because that would be considered front yard parking.
Yeah, the, yes, it would. And what we were proposing was one there and then two tandem spots. But we can remove that parking space that says number one as a result of, you know, talking with the Butters. We were trying to get as much parking on the site as possible. But we're open to having that spot listed as number one removed from the site because it is front yard parking.
Thank you. Any other questions? With that, may I have a testimony?
There are members of the board. I'm not sure why I'm popping up as Connor, but this is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we wish to defer judgment to the board. I hosted a Butters meeting for this proposal on December 2 of 2022, and some of Butters that were there addressed concerns for the number of variances the applicants are seeking, the proposal of a three-family and a one-family zoning subject district and tandem parking. Our office encourages direct communication between applicants and community members, and Attorney Derek Small did leave his contact information for Butters to connect with him directly about the project. The applicants also met and presented to the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association on January 5 of 2023. And the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association does not support the proposal as it stands today due to density and sufficient parking and reduction in open space. The Hyde Park Neighborhood Association believes the success of this proposed project is contingent on the replacement of the existing driveway that is located at the 132 Central Ave parcel to a new site at 130 Central Ave with a permitted curb cut. So the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association would like to receive a determination on that proposed change for 130 Central Ave from ISD before a decision for this project is made. And again, at this time, we wish to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Any other raised hands? Caller 617364, you're on duty. Can you state your name and address for the record and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Craig Martin, Colchester Street, Hyde Park. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, which is just referred to. We cannot support this. It's simply too much. This parcel is two-thirds the size required for a single family that's owned for. And they're tripling the occupancy, such for that tiny parcel. And as the NIPRE leaves, I'll just refer to, this plan is contingent upon the acceptance by ISD of a new driveway on the abutting property, 130. They're moving right currently, 130 uses this parcel for parking. So they have to move their driveway. That's going to require variances as well as curb cut permitting. And we've encouraged the attorney for a long time now to please get ISD's input on 130, see if that'll fly through before the board can hear this project. Again, this project is contingent upon them to move that parking open next door. So we ask the board to please defer this so we can get, ISD can submit their decisions on 130.
Thank you. Thank you. No additional raised hands. Mr. Small, can you address that curb cut issue before we?
And Madam Chair, can I also ask Mr. Small, this property is right across New Mission High School, correct?
Yes, Hyde Park.
Yeah, so New Mission High School, just for my colleagues, there is a very larger kind of structure right across the street in terms of scale.
Yeah, the school, I think, is four-story structure. And just getting back to the neighborhood, there are multiple twos and threes on Central Avenue. One's twos and threes on Central Avenue. But getting back to the parking issue. So with this project, we were proposing to move the parking for number 130, which my client also owns, to the other side of the building at 130. That wasn't before the board, or that wasn't the subject. We were going to do that after we did this project with regard to 132, putting the three-family on the existing property, the vacant lot at 132. And then we were going to come back and try to get off-street parking for 130 at a later date for 130 because there is room on the other side of 130 to do that.
But just to clarify, right?
Two separate projects.
But to confirm, though, will you need a new curb cut for 132? Or is 130 using your existing curb cut at 132?
We would need a new curb cut for 130 if this were approved. The existing curb cut at 132 exists. The curb cut at 132 exists. We would need another one. Again, that was going to be a separate project.
And you're not sharing that with 130?
No, no. The plan is not to share. We were going to go and apply for a U supremacist at 130 to do off-street parking for 130 at a later date.
And you can just confirm, what is 130? Is that a one-family or is that?
It's a two-family.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, for a motion of approval with a proviso to remove that one parking space that shows front yard parking and to allow for the tandem spaces to exist.
And BPD design review?
With BPD a design review.
May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedaberaza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1448332. The address is 727 Atlantic Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
I am, Mr. Stenbridge. Hello, Madam Chair. This is Mike Ross, attorney with the law firm Prince Lobel. I'm joined today by co-counsel Wesley Delaney Hoggins, also an attorney with the law firm Prince Lobel. So.
Mr. Ross, just sorry. As you're speaking, can you just talk through anything new to the proposal? Because I know this was before the old board, which I was a part of. And so I'm trying to understand what has changed.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. That's correct. This group denied without prejudice with a six-member board on September 27, 2022. The changes since then, following a meeting in December, the Vote Association resulted in a few things. One, most substantially reducing Sunday hours every week by two hours. We will not open now until 11:00 a.m. Number two, there was a little more emphasis on traffic mitigation, which I'll get into in a second. We also submitted to the board our traffic study that was completed by Fuss and O'Neil, which resulted in no, which basically, in summary, stated that this will be an acceptable use for this area. And third, we gained additional support from the immediate community. So what I could do is just refresh the recollection of yourself, Ms. Bedaberaza, and then the other members who were not there at the initial hearing, if you'd like me to, Madam Chair. So let's go back to Slide 1. Let me just reorient the board members. The location is at the corner of Beach Street and Atlantic Avenue. It's directly across the street from South Station. Slide 2 shows the dispensary, how it would sit. The first floor would be the dispensary. This is also, by the way, a Boston Equity, a social equity applicant. And so the way it would work is customers would enter on the left side on Beach Street, and then they would exit on the right side on Atlantic Ave. And I'll walk you through that specifically. Upstairs would be the offices for the facility. There would also be a vault on the second floor. So Slide 3, the next slide, is just a floor plan. And Madam Chair, you can kind of zoom in if you'd like to that proposed floor plan right there, upper right there. There you go. So again, you can see the Beach Street entrance. It's the ID cap accessible. There's a lift there. At the top of the lift, at the top of those stairs, there's a small desk. That would be the ID check-in. That's where people would check in. And then there's two banks of point-of-sale systems, one on the left, one on the right, to allow for ample, and this is 3,200 square feet, members. So it's a very large facility. It will allow for, will amply allow for throughput of people through and out. And then they would leave through the Atlantic Avenue side, as you can see there. That's the basic flow. The next slide, Madam Chair, Slide 4, just shows you the second floor. Really, this is just office space, meeting rooms. It's not open to the public. It would be meeting space. The only reason why we're here showing it to you today, members, Madam Chair, is because there's a vault there. And once the vault's there, that entails cannabis use, and that triggers the conditional use. I should mention that there is no variance associated with this application as well because we are within the half-mile. There is no buffer permutation. I actually have a plan. I'll show you that really quickly. The next slide will show you just a section. And I guess here, I just point out that the two vaults line up, and there's a dumbwaiter in that vault. So product can be secured. So a product can be securely, at the end of the night, can be securely brought up to the top vault without even leaving the vault. Just vault-to-vault transfer. So that's a nice feature, security-wise. The next slide, Slide 6, shows you, kind of just more lays out exactly how the throughput, how it will work for people to enter and exit the facility. And in the next slide, what we did on Slides 7 through 11, we really wanted to make sure that you had access to the traffic study and traffic analysis that Fuss and O'Neil conducted. So we included that. We also included it in a letter yesterday. Slide 12 shows you kind of the rich, there you go, the rich transportation resources that are around this facility. So a couple of things on that. As previously mentioned, I believe, there will be no advertising of this facility on highways, specifically on 93. So there will be not, no one's going to see a billboard and then get off at this exit. And that's a commitment that's been made to the community, the BCP. I didn't make that commitment here. There's a number of resources, transportation resources around the facility. At the location, they'll actually display real-time information about the train transit schedule across the street. There's access to several bus schedules, obviously MBTA access within this quarter-mile. There's, we will also be providing our employees with a subsidized MBTA Charlie card so that encourages them to take the MBTA to get to their location. And then Slide 13 shows the last slide of this presentation. This just shows you the half-mile. So 21 Milk Street, 200 High Street, both approved applications by this board are both over half a mile from the facility, which is at the bottom of your screen if you scroll down, from the 727 and a half, Atlantic Avenue facility. I guess the only other thing I'd add, Madam Chair, is Windwalker Security and Jerry Smart Security will be providing two security guards, one on Beach, one on Atlantic Ave. The hours of operations I mentioned are 9 to 9, Monday through Saturday, and now 11 to 9 on Sunday. There's a good neighbor agreement that every customer must agree to. So in the event they do anything that's out of line with a good neighbor agreement, they would not be allowed back in the facility through the ID check. We've agreed to work with Boston Police Department to fund an additional camera. That would be their exclusive control and access. They would be able to utilize just for their own efforts, their own policing efforts. And most recently, we supplied, from immediate abutters, 40 support letters from actual nearby abutters that we provided to the board. I'll pause there. Madam Chair, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to open it to public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Sherry Dong and members of the board. My name is Tua from the office. With me was held by our office in May of last year. The proponents submitted a package of support containing 179 letters this morning. At a public hearing last September, the CBA did vote to deny without prejudice. Since that decision, the applicant has continued to work with the community and has held it with me. The applicant has agreed to admit his hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. some days a week. From 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. some days a week. To 9:00, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The proposed cannabis business at 727 Atlantic has various concerns from the community regarding smoke, traffic, crime, and the business model. The location of the business directly abuts a 32-unit residential building. The residents have stated that they are already struggling to combat unwanted marijuana smoke in public spaces, and adding a smoke-based business could potentially exacerbate the issue of the amount of unwanted smoke. The members of the Leather District residents, many Leather District residents have raised concerns that traffic congestion is already an issue at the corner of Beach and Atlantic Ave, and adding a new vehicle-dependent business could potentially further hamper movement in and around the Leather District. Finally, the community has also expressed that they would like a point of contact from the business to address any concerns that may arise after the business is open. At this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you. Trulon, can you just confirm, we do have quite a number of letters of support, but looking at their addresses, they mostly do not seem like abutters. Is there support from abutters?
What I have, in terms of support, I have what was submitted to me by the applicants. I don't have many letters of support from abutters.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Any other elected officials offices?
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa from Council President Flynn's office. Council President Flynn has submitted a letter and would like to go on record in opposition due to feedback from abutters and neighbors in the Leather District. Neighbors and constituents have called attention to concerns on traffic congestion, pedestrian safety, and exacerbating issues related to double parking. Moreover, they have highlighted concerns about existing quality-of-life issues that they feel would deteriorate further with this location, such as loitering in the neighborhood and unwanted smoke filtering into living spaces. For these reasons and others, Council President Flynn and neighbors continue to oppose this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Lynch? Oh, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Laj Michael Flaherty. The council would go on record in opposition.
Thank you. Any other elected official's office before we get to public testimony? Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Well, Madam Chair, this is Christopher Lynch. I'm the president and CEO of a company called AtScale. I've been a resident of the area, not a resident, but my business has existed for the last five years in the area at 711 Atlantic as well as 11 Farnsworth. And I found Ms. Fran Jewell and her associates to be professional and they have my full support. I'd also add that if we're concerned about smoke and traffic, then maybe we should eliminate the cars in the liquor stores, because there's no difference in my eye. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Melissa sent the request unmutted. Can you state your name and address for the record once unmuted? Okay, I'll go to Miguel. Once unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition? They might be having issues with their audio.
Keep going.
Okay, have no additional raised hands. Just want to give it, Miguel. Yeah, I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I can't see the board. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, can you just confirm the hours of operation? I think I heard from 10 to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. Is that accurate?
No, Ms. Better Barazza, it's 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Sunday.
11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., you said, on Sunday?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I believe I have another question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ross, is this applicant also the same applicant that has all the locations in Boston, in our neighborhoods? Or can I read the locations in Boston?
Mr. Ross, is this the only location proposed?
Yeah, Desi Fran Jewell is associated with one of the other applications, you may recall, at Columbus.
And there?
That was recently in front of the board. As far as I know, the other members are not. It is a social equity application, so 51% of the owners are someone who was qualified by the Boston Cannabis Board as social equity applicants.
Mr. Ross, I'm so sorry. I missed the location that you said one of them was associated with.
329 Columbus Avenue, recently in front of the board in the South End, the old Coda Restaurant around that's there, near the corner of Dartmouth Street, if you recall.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Mr. Valencia?
Yes, thank you. Was just connecting the names.
She's a South End resident who grew up in that community.
Got it. Any other questions from the board? Trulon, did you want to say anything else?
No, no further comments.
Okay. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I put forth a motion with four provisos. One being this-
You're supporting, I mean approving?
Yes, I'm putting forth a motion of approval with provisos. There'll be four. One is for this applicant only. The second being with hours of operation, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, with 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Sunday. Three, that there would be a visible signage on the exterior noting management contact personnel. And four, BPD Design Review on the exterior signage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We will now move into the hearing scheduled for 11:00 a.m. And at this time, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawal or deferral of the cases in time.
All right, hearing none.
We will move on to the first case being BOA 1445185, the address of 68 Tremont Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yep, Carrie and Ben. Are you here for this proposal?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Hello.
Okay, can start?
Sure. So we are requesting zoning relief for our three-story dwelling. The refusal letter had the violations of changing existing roof profile. And the second one was required 20-foot setback. Our change to existing roof profile, we had, the existing was at 26 feet 4 inches. We are looking to go up to 28. And the existing 20-foot setback, we have 18 feet setback. And then after the deck is built, it'll be 12, 12 feet. And that request is on the-
Okay. Sorry, any other, any questions from the board? Any other, are we missing something?
No.
No, it's, they're requesting the two feet up and then from 20 feet setback, there are about 18 foot. So it's a minimal difference there, but yeah.
Exactly. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to propose the testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Green here with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. The applicant completed the community process via an abutters meeting held on March 15. At the meeting, residents did not have any questions after the presentation. This office has received zero letters in support and zero in opposition. It is at this time that we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Have no raised hands at the moment. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I put forward a motion of approval with BPD Design Review paying special attention to the third-floor addition of roof line.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have case BOA 1407945, the address of 160 West 7th Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Good morning, Eric Zacharson. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. Hi.
Are you one, too?
Sorry, Eric Zacharson, architect for the project, here to represent the homeowners who are seeking to expand their roof deck, their existing roof deck on this project at 160 West 7th Street.
Please proceed.
As you can see here, this is the, the roof deck on the right is theirs. The roof deck on the left is a separate owner in the same four-unit building.
Eric, you might be coming in and out. I'm not sure if you're still speaking.
I know, I can't tell either.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm not sure what's going on. Yes, I don't know what you heard. Eric Zacharson, architect for the project, address of 9 Sackville Street in Charlestown. I'm here representing the homeowners who are seeking to expand their private roof deck on this four-unit building at 160 West 7th Street.
Is that a head house presently or a?
It is a head house presently. It is the existing access to the roof deck.
Are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting on December 12th, 2022. Noah Butters attended the meeting. The City Side Neighborhood Association does not support any inclusion of roof decks on new developments or added roof decks on existing housing because the neighborhood has too many issues and noise complaints with existing roof decks. Therefore, they oppose this proposal. ONS has received three emails in support of this proposal. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa from Council President Flynn's office. Council President Flynn would like to go on record in opposition due to an extension of the roof deck and quality-of-life issues that have been highlighted by civic groups like the City Side Neighborhood Association and others for years when it comes to similar proposals. Neighbors in South Boston have called attention to late parties and loud noise at all hours as well as trash removal and pest control issues, often the result of stacked parties with pizza boxes and beer cans often finding their way to the sidewalks and streets. This behavior has negatively impacted our seniors, persons of disabilities, and young families, and was exacerbated during the pandemic. Council President Flynn continues to join his neighbors in civic localizations in opposition to similar roof deck proposals or extensions. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Laj Michael Flaherty, Eric Linsens, and Council President Flynn's office, as well as noting the violations under Article 68, Council would go on record in opposition.
Dear board member, if I may, this is, you guys, San Chen owner. Can I say something?
Can we finish public testimony first?
Oh, sure.
Attorney David, are you going to give testimony here? I have no additional raised hands. Okay. Yeah, if applicant could just address the-- what is the current size and what are you looking to expand to? And what are the-- are there other roof decks in your immediate vicinity?
There are other roof decks in the immediate vicinity. The current roof deck-- the current roof deck is about 240 square feet. It's 22 by 11 feet. The proposed roof deck would still sit in the middle of the site, but would be 12 foot by 41 feet, so just over 500 square feet. And the intention is they have a growing family and they would like to have more open space for their-- for their family.
I'm sorry, are these condos in this building, or is this a--
Yes, there are four condos in the building.
Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'll put a forward motion to approve.
Okay, may I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
The chair also votes no, but the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1409915, with an address of 32 Fisher Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Barone. I'm an attorney with Roberto Israel &amp; Weiner at 255 State Street in Boston. I'm here on behalf of Keiren Mayer, the owner of 32 Fisher Avenue. Mr. Mayer is a longtime Boston resident and has owned and occupied the subject premises for four years. He needs electricity and desires to maintain Boston residency and is seeking to convert the existing three-family building to a five-family building. The property is located on the southerly side of Fisher Avenue, across from Lockland Playground, and backs up to Wensley Street. There is a significant change in grade at the property in that Fisher Avenue is substantially higher elevation than that of Wensley Street, as evidenced by a stone retaining wall at the rear of the property with a set of stone steps leading down to Wensley Street. As I mentioned, the property is currently improved with a residential three-story building with a basement and a walk-up attic, unlike other buildings in the area. 32 Fisher Avenue has an A-frame roof above the third floor, which provides walk-up attic space with adequate height to stand. Moreover, due to the slope of the property, the rear of the basement level is at-grade with the rear yard and has existing at-grade egresses, as well as several full-size windows in the rear. We are before you today requesting variances to permit the following. We seek to change the occupancy from a three-family to a five-family dwelling. The renovations to the existing basement would be done to add a fourth unit. The basement is currently used for storage, as well as laundry and utility that's available to the occupants on the first, second, and third floor. The storage is currently used by Mr. Mayer, the landlord. The proposed unit would include two bedrooms and one bathroom. And as you can see from the plans on the screen, the intention is to keep the laundry room, as well as the boiler room slash utility room, available to the residents on the first, second, third floor, as well as the basement and the attic space. We are also proposing the addition of a sprinkler room in the basement, as well as the addition of-- the extension of the front egress from the first floor down into the basement. And we would be removing one of the two existing egresses and replacing it with the front egress. The renovations intended for the attic are intended to legalize existing improvements. When Mr. Mayer purchased the property back in May of 2019, the fourth floor was already improved with a two-bedroom or one-and-a-half bedroom with a bath and kitchen. We are seeking to make that a one-bedroom unit, legalizing that by increasing the headspace over the egress on the left side. We have to add a dormer approximately four-and-a-half feet wide, so as to increase the headroom for that stairwell to be code compliant. We would also be seeking to add a small deck off the rear of the attic as well. As I mentioned, the intended-- the intended purpose of these renovations is to legalize the existing attic use for Mr. Mayer's occupancy, and we'd like to add a rental unit in the-- due to the existing conditions at the premises, the footprint, the height, and the gross square footage of the structure would not change. The only exterior modifications would be the addition of that dormer that I mentioned in the attic to increase headroom over the egress. And we would also be removing one of the existing basement egresses and replacing that with an egress through the front door and stairs down into the basement unit. The intention here is for Mr. Mayer to occupy the top floor unit as an on-site landlord. We believe that the proposed units will benefit the city by adding much-needed housing to the city's housing inventory. And we also believe that the property's close location to the MBTA bus service, as well as the Orange Line and the Green Line, make this an ideal location for additional housing. Additional information in support of our application was included in a memorandum included with the materials. And as far as community outreach goes, we began our community outreach back in November of 2022 and finished in March of 2023. We met with the Mission Hill Neighborhood Services on South Beach Mall. We met with McAvoy Hill CDC on December 13th. And we met with the Community Alliance Mission Hill three times on February 8th, February 15th, and again on March 15th. And the Office of Neighborhood Services hosted an abutters meeting--
We'll hear more about that from ONS, I think, so please proceed with the rest of your presentation.
Thank you. I apologize, Madam Chair.
That's okay.
So generally speaking, the variances we are seeking this afternoon-- this morning are to permit that three-family use-- the five-family use in a district that does not permit multifamily. We're also seeking variances related to parking, excessive floor area, excessive height, as well as insufficient lot area per dwelling unit and insufficient usable open space. As I mentioned earlier, the height, the parking, and the lot area are all in compliance with what we have-- I'm sorry, not compliance-- are all in accordance with what exists at this time. And we do believe that based upon our architect's calculation, we do actually satisfy the usable open space criteria, but we are seeking that request because it was cited on our denial letter. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, questions from the board?
I'm looking at the adjacent properties and for 40 Fisher Ave, is it accurate that there's 40 units, I mean 30 units in the apartment building?
I'm not sure of the total number of units, but I do know that that was a substantial project approved back in April of 2015 by the board, with, I believe, a number of similar variances, but I do not have that material immediately in front of me right now.
Okay. No further questions?
And just to confirm on, you know, on Google Maps, this does look like the-- one of the only four-- would be one of the only four floors-- four-story buildings, as far as I can go down. Is that accurate?
Correct, Madam Chair. From what we can see from city records and from Google Maps, there are a few A-framed roofs farther down Fisher Avenue. However, those appear to be two stories with the attic serving as the third story. So we do appear to be, to our knowledge, one of the only three-and-a-half or four-story residential buildings on the block.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, would you like to provide your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommend a denial without prejudice on this. The appellant has adequate use of the property, going from a three to a five. It would increase the bedroom count from what we saw in the plans from 12 to 15 in the neighborhood that's, you know, very popular for student housing. We just feel that the appellant has adequate use of the property right now. We'd recommend the board to deny without prejudice. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I open it to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board to back our information on the community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on February 1st. Most of those in attendance were members of the various neighborhood associations in the area. The applicant, as he mentioned, went on to meet with the Community Alliance of Mission Hill and the Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services. Both groups submitted letters in opposition to this proposal. MH Neighborhood Housing Services cited concerns of these additional units being rented to undergraduates and a large number of variances being sought. With that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? We have a few raised hands here. Any other elected officials? If not, Martin, go ahead. Can you state your name and address and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Good morning. This is Martin Beinborn, 88 Allegheny Street in Mission Hill. As president of the Community Alliance of Mission Hill, I would like to testify that the community voted in opposition of this proposal. Our neighborhood is already flooded by student housing with associated noise and other quality of life issue. Adding further student density at a time that already exceeds some of the zoning limits is therefore a major concern. Some residents also pointed out that property owners in the past have often claimed that they would live on-site as with 32 Fisher Avenue. However, our typical experience has been that properties quickly become absentee landlord investments. Thank you for considering our community opposition.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Any final questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to deny without prejudice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, if I may--
We're voting. Mr. Stembridge?
No.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, and I say yes because I think just it's two beds for one hundred to have--
Your motion--
Okay, yeah.
Yes, right. Mr. Valencia?
No.
Ms. Better Barazza?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
No.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Next case?
Thank you, members of the board.
This time, we will complete. I'll ask-- we'll ask for any withdrawal or deferral from the 1130 contract.
Yes, Mr. Secretary, this is Attorney Ryan Spitz. The sister application's first application is 518 through 520 Park Street, and the sister application is 522 Park Street.
Last piece is the 1130?
Yes, okay. All right, then with that, we will continue on the 11 o'clock hearing.
I'm sorry, are you seeking a deferral, sir?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, I am.
Mr. Stembridge is seeking a deferral for 518 to 520--
So--
522 to 522 Park Street.
So with that, I will read both of them into the record. First being case BOA 1405701, with the address of 518 to 520 Park Street. And along with that would be case BOA 1445525, with the address of 522 Park Street.
Okay, Mr. Spitz, it's not showing up, but if you want to proceed?
Yes. Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Marcy Business Address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. I'm here asking for a short deferral on this matter. So this is actually the second deferral. The first one, there was an issue with the sister application of being published at the same time and being advertised. Today, we're here. We do have them advertised and published at the same time. However, there are issues with the refusal letter. We'd like to take up with the Special Services Department to have those amended. So again, we'd like to have the proper violations added to those refusals. So I'm looking for a short deferral for this, please.
Thank you. Javier, what's the next available?
Yes, Madam Chair, July 11 would be the next available.
Great.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer to July 11.
May I have a second?
July 11.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Next, returning to the 11:00 a.m. hearing, we have case BOA 1309386, with the address being 75 Maywood Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please proceed.
Hello, how are you doing? Good morning. My name is Clayton Weston. I am the owner of vacant land in the Roxbury area of 7577 Maywood. I've owned an adjacent street, Savin Street, for over 30-plus years, and my entire family lives on that street. With owning that land, I seek approval to, you know, provide housing to a vacant land in the area that has-- has been a bit of an issue. And so I'm now going to take this time to turn it over to my architect, Mr. Fred Mannatyak, to describe the proposed plans that we are seeking approval for.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I think what my client is proposing is to build six units on a-- on a current vacant land that has been sitting idle and collecting trash and not being used right now. What my client's proposing is to build six units with six deeded parking spaces with one curb cot. That would not add to the parking issue in the neighborhood. The units would be-- five of them will be two bedrooms, two baths, seven hundred square feet, there would be a small studio on the ground floor. If you-- I don't know if you're able to scroll up. We can take a quick look at the client and the elevations. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought I noticed. So our proposal is to-- is to allow the-- the building to be designed in such a way that at the back of the building, it will be-- I'm still allowing the parking to be underneath. It's still-- allow the-- the building to still contain the six unit along with the six parking spaces. We've gone through the community process. We had an original abutters meeting that was well-received. Then it was suggested to us by the mayor's liaison that we also have a larger community meeting with Project Right, which is the kind of the neighborhood organization and neighborhood. We also had that meeting, and that also was well-received, and we received a lot of support from Project Right. Like my client has said, he and the entire family live in the neighborhood. The project is very well-supported by everybody, the abutters and the surrounding neighbors. So at this point, we have a couple of reliefs that we are seeking. The relief is for floor area ratio, excessive height, front and side yard that do not meet the zoning codes. Having said that, I think I can turn it over for any questions that you or the board may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the board?
Yes. Why did you not submit plans for the project or elevations?
There aren't any other issues submitted.
I only see what's in front of us right now, just these two drawings, a plot plan and a building footprint plan.
For exchange, we submitted a full set of drawings.
Jessica, do you have that on record?
Well, I don't have control of the plans, but I can check in with Stephanie in short.
Yes. Is it?
You don't have plans?
Yeah, I think there's a way that maybe we can come back and see which ones.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is not good.
Yes.
If you guys would like, you can put a motion to defer so that the applicant submit these plans to later. No revisit now, right? As of this hearing, we're probably not going to receive a clear ask.
So if I can just chime in, you know, we submitted to I A C for rejection. That's, we had to have plans and elevations. That's how they were able to decide the deficiencies. And if the board will allow me, I can go ahead and allow me to share my screen. I can present that.
We don't share screens, so I think what we're proposing is a deferral since we don't have the plans. If Javier can, what is your next available date for that?
Yeah, July 11.
But is there a chance to defer to maybe later today and see if somehow they can find the plans? Because the plan was submitted, I'm not sure what happened.
Javier, is that possible? I feel comfortable reviewing them later.
Yeah, because I think they're here. They have to be here.
You know, if you guys are able to, but you know, timing wise, I don't know what time they would be able to do it or even have plans back, but I think my recommendation would be to defer to the late date.
Okay, so that sounds fine.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for a deferral on their earliest possible date for the applicant.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1369555 with the address being 2207 Dorchester Avenue. Is the applicant or representative present?
Jessica, do you know if Derek?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, hi, this is Derek Bloom from Bloom Architecture. I'm here representing the owner, Shlomi Gava, who is here. I'm not sure if he got added as a presenter or not. I'd like to present the project briefly, 2207 Dorchester Avenue. So existing three-family residence with an unfinished full-height basement. It's a walkout, as you can see in the bottom right picture. That's the rear of the building, walkout condition. It's actually above grade at the back of the building and below grade at the street end. We're proposing to finish the basement, adding one unit, which would create a four-unit building instead of a three-unit building. No change to the exterior footprint or height or any features other than cutting in the code-required windows for egress and daylight, particularly in the bedrooms, as you can see on that right side elevation. A series of taller windows were existing shorter windows on today. It would be a two-bedroom unit, and it would partition off a portion of the basement to be common utilities and common access to those utilities so that they would not be trapped inside of this new unit. Here's the floor plan existing on the left, proposed on the right. As you can see, kind of an open plan living space towards the backyard and on the street end, the bedrooms with the dual windows on the left. On the right of the plan, you see the common mechanical space and the common entry vestibule. We can go to the next slide. I believe we can always come back. The upper levels don't change. We just have them in the plans for records to see what's in the building above. All right, that's kind of it. Just kind of wanted to walk you through it. It's a fairly straightforward project in our opinion, and we had good feedback at the community meetings.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing, Jessica, can we take public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cockrum, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process at this time. Our office held a Butters meeting in January this year, and Noah Butters attended though. And I believe the developers have met with the local civic group regarding the project, but no official stance has been taken. But we'd like to defer to the judgment of this board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve with the P D A design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have, excuse me, case BOA 1423269 with the address of 1424 Blue Hill Avenue. Will the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, I am, members of the board. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Alfonso Sierra with Associates, I'm the architect. And what we're proposing is to provide an additional unit. It's an existing three-family residence, and we're proposing to provide an additional two-bedroom, one-bath unit in the basement and also to extend the, to add a bathroom and extend the pantry throughout the floors one, two, and three through the existing building. So basically, the existing basement, we're proposing to add the required windows for egress in the bedrooms and also split the space with the utilities that are there now. And then on the upper floors, it's a basic extension of the existing porch that is open but roofed. So we're going to be enclosing those areas throughout the pantry and the additional bathroom throughout. And that's basically the propose, what we're proposing at this time.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions from the board?
Yes, what's the proposed height on the basement?
The proposed height is eight feet.
Okay, great, thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions from the board? May I take public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, or actually, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 1424 Blue Hill Ave had a Butters meeting on January 24th of this year. They met with the Greater Marappan Neighborhood Council. The GMNC board made their recommendation, and the recommendation is for review by the VPDA. They state that there are serious concerns about the decreased usable open space on a very small lot on a main artery road. The expansion of each unit into what would be open spaces reduces the available open space, reduction in parking and non-conformity. The committee also looked at the existing occupancy and found out there were and are existing businesses on the property as evidenced by signage adhered to on the front porch above four mailboxes. The current signage advertises five businesses on the property. The applicant proposes to enlarge their floor plans and thereby enlarge the envelope in the back, further encroaching the rear yard, which reduces the amount of usable open space and available parking. The usable open space compartments per unit is insufficient, and the proposed size of the basement unit is excessive as it would reduce the available open floor space further and results in the property becoming more non-conforming, and that is of the GMNC. As of this time, we have zero letters of support and zero letters of opposition, and we are choosing to defer, jumping to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Ford, are you looking to get testimony here? See, your hand is raised.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yep, can you state your name and address and tell us briefly if you're in support or opposition?
Thank you. My name is Jufor, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jufor Flogisain. I'm the owner of the residence located at 1550 Roehill Avenue in Marappan and 1424 Roehill Avenue is considered one of the neighborhoods just close to my building apartments down there. And I want to testify in favor of the change in the three units and add another one. As you know, Marappan is home of the third-largest Haitian community. We have lots of people coming up in Marappan, and we have a shortage also of housing in Marappan. Yes, I just came up from a meeting with the governor's office regarding the situation in the city in terms of having housing opportunities, especially for Marappan residents. As a pastor, a community leader, I strongly just support this proposal that would definitely expand the housing stocks in Marappan, and I believe that the property is well, well-located, very convenient, just to avoid many cars because we have many buses that travel into Roehill Avenue, and I'm strongly in support of the proposal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No additional reasons. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to move forward and motion to approve the project with the P D A design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? Is Mr. Langham with us?
Yes.
Thank you. The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1432592 with the address of 75 Tremont Street. This is also an Article 80 project. The applicant or the representative present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good morning, or yeah, good morning, Mr. Hanley.
Good morning, Madam Chair, the secretary, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, representing the proponent, appellant, Victor McQuillte Miller, LLP, 28 State Street in Boston. Just introduce you to the development team is the first slide here. The proponent's a joint venture between Saracen Properties and Main Sale Management, Jim Kelleher, Ted Saraceno, and Travis Powell. Obviously introduced due to myself. We're also working with PCA architects, Nitti John, who is with us as a panelist, and will take you through the presentation after I take you through the first five slides. This is an Article 80 project. We work very closely on transportation mitigation and planning efforts with Howard Stein Hudson, and also very proud of the restoration of landscaping and reforestation in partnership with Copley Wolf Landscape Architects. Next slide, please. So the site, the site is really an anomaly, surrounded by multifamily conditions. Large 1.3 acres of underutilized land just west of Oak Square towards the Newton and Boston City Line. You'll see it in black hash. It is also burdened in a very unique way by a severe change in grade, which runs from Washington Street down to Tremont Street, about 44 feet in change of grade on one side to 33 on the other. It is part of an institutional holding and has been for several decades owned by the Archdiocese of Boston, which also part of their former St. John's Church in the back, which has been sold to an independent party and the rectory, which was associated with it, above and its parking facility. I mention that just to give you context of the area. While we are in a 1F5,000 zone, this 1.3 acres is bordered on both sides by MFR conditions. And the site itself, as you'll look at the lower left-hand side, is also burdened by an overwhelming abundance of invasive tree growth, lack of evergreens, and what we are seeking to do is improve the state of the environment as part of this proposal. Next slide, please. Just to take you for a walk around the neighborhood, I talked a little bit about the unique aspects of the site, support of the variances. Key code up here on your upper left. This is 99 Tremont Street, which is immediately adjacent to the project site, the red building. It is six stories, 62 units of condominium homeownership, has an FAR of about 1.85. In the middle is the immediately adjacent property to our right on the east side, includes two buildings that are approximately four stories, about an average FAR of 1.2, 1.25, and there are six units in each, so it's a multifamily condition. Directly across the street to the south, you see in three, again, four-story multifamily. And this slide, photo number four on the left side, is important. You're seeing a two-story structure that's actually the top of the six-story building at 99 Tremont Street. So that illustrates that dramatic change in grade. Our property site is to the left, and you are looking from the parking lot and back of the St. John's Rectory and Church across the street. Again, you see the multifamily conditions and four stories. And next slide, please. So what we're really proud of for this development is looking at improving the state of the environment. As you'll see in the upper right, this is sort of a, you know, site with its steep grade is underutilized, to say the least, and doesn't contribute to the habitat and actually detracts from it. We brought in Copley Wolf, and we had him do a detailed study that revealed that eighty, over 85% of the tree growth is invasive. And what does that mean? It's on the Massachusetts Prohibited Plant List and has impacts both on the habitat but also on its contributing aspects. So what we did is we looked at how can we plant more trees and how can we bring in adult growth, evergreens, and keep what is contributing. There are some alms and oaks, which you'll see that we're also retaining as well. And the upper left, again, that is the site to the left is 99 Tremont Street that I mentioned, and again, our 1.3 acres with that steep change in grade. Next slide, please. So just give you a summary, then I'll hand it off to Nitti to take you through the development program. We are very excited to bring a contributing and transformative residential development to this site. And what does that mean? Modest in size, appropriate in scale, and contributing both to the dynamics of Brighton's housing market but also to the surrounding infrastructure. So we're proposing a four-to-six-story building that is situated within the very steep grade to help mitigate, significantly mitigate its height. Seventy total units, all homeownership. Brighton suffers from a disproportionate amount of rental to homeownership, almost 75% rental. So this is something that is very much needed. When I talk about the scale, our FAR is 1.21, which is less than those surrounding structures or consistent with the one to the right. And we look at what we can do to improve the state of the neighborhood around us. And that starts with a robust landscaping, which we talked about, the reforestation, but also providing passive spaces and improving pedestrian. but also providing passive spaces and improving pedestrian connectivity on this section of Tremont Street that is now lacking. Creating and investing a new covered bus shelter and a new mid-block crosswalk for pedestrian safety. And obviously, we have onsite parking, which is one-to-one. But we're also investing in blue lights, blue bikes to create that better connectivity. The other thing I'll say, just in leaving this to Nitti, is what you'll see here is also 60% of this site is open space. And, and we think that's something that is, we talk about precedent and how it's not governing. We think that's a good precedent. And I hope you'll see that in the slides to follow. Nitti?
Thank you, Joe. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Nitti John. I'm an architect at PCA. And we have been working on this project diligently for the last, I would say, over five years now, looking at various options and studying the site, as Joe mentioned. Because it's a 40-foot grade change, there were some considerations that we needed to do with the site. The second page, since Joe has talked about the first one, the ground floor realm and public improvements, this is a typical floor plan of, the spike now shows a second floor. But it also highlights the, how many one beds, one-bed dens, two beds and three beds are in this project. This project, initially, we used to talk about studios, but we intentionally stayed away from studios because of the focus for, for sign home buyers and folks who are downsizing in the neighborhood. It was a very important part. Another part, the top three yellow boxes were more to highlight the, highlights of the project in terms of unit matrix that we studied. You'll see the landscaping portion on the left side of the building. That's the West Corquette. And it is, we did spend a lot of time looking at resident amenities for various people in the building, assuming it will be multi-generational, looking at smaller spaces, larger spaces, how they engage with the interiors, what that means for the exterior and programming those spaces. And we would love to continue that as we move along. What are listed here are the ground floor amenities, second floor patio, which is on grade, and the fifth floor amenities, as we mentioned. Next slide, please. This is a good illustration of the, the story behind this project. I will say as an architect, the, the building kind of takes a step back on the site. The beauty of this project is that it will, at the end of a project, have 220 trees on site, out of which 70 that we've curated would be the good trees. And then we are adding 150 new diverse native trees on the site. And it was a big part of the story of the site. And if you can't see what we've imposed in the site plan to see, there's a slight dashed black line that you'll kind of see that has stepped away on the outside of the building. That line is very intentional because we are holding a lot of the existing trees along the northeast edge. We actually met with the neighbors last September and a walk on the site to actually study these and kind of give the neighbors a better understanding. The site has zero evergreen trees now, and that's the picture you saw on the winter photo. It was from mid-February. And the neighbors have no grace on shielding or green in the winter. So we did consider that and study that with Copley Wolf. As Joe mentioned, it's about 60% of it is open space. And it is very intentional as part of the site and how to integrate and add more. Next slide, please. This, this is a continuation of what it means for the species of trees, what we're talking, because we talked about biodiversity and how to increase the native diversity. Copley Wolf did a study at different points, whether it's on this sketch on the left is a, is on the street where you, we do have, we talked about beach trees along the street, along Tremont Street, and how to do that stratification of plantings from shrubs and plants to larger trees. Next slide, please. The next few, three slides are basically renderings of what this building looks like on Tremont Street. So this one is standing closer to the 99 Tremont side and looking at the project from the west, looking towards east. There's an existing bus stop on site. And this project is going to have a mid-block crosswalk, which does not show up on this view, but it is kind of behind where that first car is, for pedestrian safety and traffic calming. And we would be adding a bus shelter. Next slide, please. This is the inner courtyard on the second floor that I was talking about on the plan. It's a private courtyard, but definitely, the, the nice thing is because of the slope, the hill slope, it actually works in our advantage to have real terra firma and provide true green space. Spaces for patio, places for people to gather, grill, as well as pure green lawn space for a variety of activities. Next slide, please. And this is the last view that shows what 75 Tremont would be at the entry, for example. And you'll see there's a lot of wood and green color. It is truly inspired by the natural palette and the landscaping. Next slide, please. This is a slide that shows the zoning where we are today with one, this is a 1F 5,000 zoning area and what that means for this project. And the asterisk behind the exceeded floor area ratio of 0.5 and a building height that we exceed, that is, the original one is 35 feet, two and a half stories. Given the precedent and all our extensive work with the BPDA team, MBTA, BTD, to develop this product over time, these are the ones we are asking for from this group. And I think the last slide.
Yeah, Nitti, just if I may, Madam Chair, on the, on the zoning too. So one of the things you'll see there is that this project is complying, if not exceeding, all of the setback requirements, including the front side and rear yard. And again, over almost 525 square feet of open space per unit far in excess. And, and as Nitti said, you know, considering the history, we need relief in three main areas. Again, the FAR at 1.21, which is modest and consistent with and less than our surrounding structures. The height, which again, we would suggest is mitigated by that steep change in grade and the design, the innovation in the design and the building setbacks, but also the surrounding context. And then finally is the use. We are in a 1F 5,000. This particular site has absolutely no records with the city of ever being used as a single-family or residential use. My sense is it was zoned in the 1F5, again, because it is owned as part of the Archdiocese of Boston, was once a greenhouse there. And again, at 1.3 acres of invasive growth in the middle of the housing crisis, we think what we've done is to strike a balance of open space and modest density with a contributing type of housing. So on the affordability side, which I, I just want to know, because I don't think we covered it, 70 units, all condos, as Nitti indicated, they are no studios. They are ones, twos, and three bedrooms. We are providing 17% onsite affordable, far in excess of the city's requirements. Three of those are three-bedroom unit affordables for homeownership, which we also think is very important, especially in a neighborhood that has such a high disparity of rental to homeownership and obviously a need for affordability. And finally, I'd just like to obviously thank you for allowing us to go through this. We were approved, as Nitti indicated, by the BPDA Board on March 16th. There was a lot of guidance that was provided by the IAG members. I know there's some here to speak, and the ELOCA elected delegation. I want to thank them and the neighbors for helping to make this project better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. Is there anyone from BPDA, the project manager, who could also speak to this, to the community process in particular?
Yes, hi, hello. My name is Nick Carter, Senior Project Manager with the BPDA. This project did, as the proponent mentioned, receive BPDA Board approval and enjoyed a fairly long and robust community process that resulted in a number of changes to the project. And as they stated, is maintaining the nature of the site as, again, was part of, one of the many issues that came up throughout the long, routine process. So again, I can say that this project enjoys a fair bit of community support and also went through a robust process and was previously approved. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, so we did receive a fair number of letters of opposition from what seemed to be a butters. I mean, if you could elaborate a little bit, I guess, on the process.
Certainly.
Whether you're aware of these ongoing, or someone else, you know, who had written.
No, I, I think, Madam Chair, I think there's, the, the letters that we received in which states almost the opposite in terms of a robust community process. What's, what's noted is that the BPDA is holding, let's say, two public hearing process. But what the BPDA reports to us is that the developers have done an extensive outreach process. So that, so we're getting kind of what a, I guess, we need a little bit more definition in terms of what is a robust developer community process versus the BPDA's role in mitigating kind of concerns of the neighbors? If you can clarify that, that would be helpful.
Certainly. This project originally was a much larger project. When it first came to the BPDA for service prefiled process a number of years ago, the developer then went and took that original design out to the community and met with civic groups and other local groups in the area. And what resulted is the much scaled down, more, again, the word's escaping me, but sort of more permanent resident-focused project. So the, the project had a process outside of the BPDA process, sort of before they came to us with the design you see today. And then throughout that process, working with the BPDA design staff over the course of a number of IAG meetings and public meetings. And again, I know that this developer has gone and done their own work sort of outside of our process, meeting with folks, resulted in the project that you see in parting today.
Yeah, Ms. Federer Raza, I, I wonder if I could just add quickly to, from our standpoint, so this, the timeframe of this project, both in the outreach predated the pandemic and, and then happened subsequent to it. So we did a lot of in-person outreach with the immediate neighborhood. As Nitti indicated, we even hosted a nice sidewalk where we marked trees together and brought our LA there. We also presented in person, because the neighborhood group, the BAIA, actually held their meetings in person even during some parts of the pandemic, which was helpful. So there was a lot of opportunity for in-person and detailed engagement. We're pleased that the neighborhood group voted to support us. I'm sure you'll hear from them. The other thing that I think is important, I showed you that map of the immediate area. We had IAG participation by our direct adjacent abutter, the head of the HOA at 99, who was supportive. And we also received a letter, you received a letter of support by our only other direct abutter, who owns the parcels of Tip Top and Washington Street. And so we've, you know, tried to work very hard and closely with, with everyone on this. I'm not sure we made everyone happy, but certainly the scale of this is, and the investment in the open space and the contributions for pedestrian safety and traffic are all the factors of the dividends of that robust process and the support we've received.
And Mr. Hanley, can you just, Mr. Carter mentioned your original projects was much larger. Can you just, what, what number unit count?
Yeah, it was.
Condos?
Yes, ma'am, 120 units of rental housing. And then it was lowered in between. And then we were able to come to an arrangement with the Archdiocese. This is a, a long-term lease, 100-year, 99-year lease. Not that uncommon that you would do condos under a land lease. We see that in the city of Boston. But it did take some convincing with, you know, with the church, which retains ownership of, of the parcel.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I, I also have another question in terms of how is the percentage of the owner-occupied units determined? You listed it at 65%.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So that also was derived through the robust community process with the IAG, the elected officials, the neighbors. So how we're doing that is it's in our board memo. This is an Article 80 large project. Those are enforceable obligations, right? It's in our cooperation agreement, also an enforceable document. And it'll be in our condominium declaration of trust, what you call the E restrictions. We have done this, and I say we, I have done this as an attorney, as part of development teams in Brighton. It's a concern that we share, this not be, you know, an investor-type building. We think that the location and how we programmed it as a superior product for empty nesters and mature owners, which there's a huge demand for, that it'll achieve that. But we were happy to put, to verify that in a legal way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
My question would be, what's the timeframe for construction of the project? And have you selected a general contractor for the project?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that question, Mr. Shepherd. Ideally, we would, the client would like to start in the fall, and they have not selected a contractor yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, let's open it up to public testimony, Jessica. Sure, do you have the ONS on?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, also Brighton Lays on for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, here to testify to the community engagement process that this applicant underwent. Our office received, or was copied on, seven letters of opposition and also received one letter that included 21 signatures opposing the project. I also believe that the zoning chair of the Brighton Olsen Improvement Association, Annabella Gomes, is on to testify as to their stance on this project. But at this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Some of those signatures may have been overlapping as well. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, before, before proceed, can you just confirm, like, let's focus on those in support first. If you're, if you're not in support right now, lower your hands and, and re-raise them when we're, when we're addressing opposition. Okay, Councilman Redden?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am rising to speak in support of this project. It was a project that was first proposed a few years before I came into office. And the project team has worked diligently with the AIG, the community, over several years. As was previously mentioned, the, the project has changed dramatically in that time. It, and I feel that the project team has landed on a quality, a greatly improved project that offers much-needed homeownership opportunities in our, in our, in our neighborhood in Oak Square. The, one very impressive aspect is the conservation and improvement of the green space with the introduction of many native, new native trees and conserving 60% of the open space, which is sort of almost unprecedented in, in Boston at this time. The improvements in public, pedestrian safety are also incredibly important. And the one-to-one parking, the bike station, and the affordability of the, the units. 70 units with 70% on affordability is very, very much needed as we're trying to stabilize our population and encourage more long-term residents. And we're very happy to see the three, addition of three, three-bedroom units in the affordable portion of this project, which will hopefully offer an opportunity for families to settle and reside in, in our neighborhood in, in Oak Square. So thank you very much for your time this morning, and I stand in support of this project.
Thank you, Councilman Redden. Councilor Murphy's office?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tommy and your comrade Eric Murphy's office. At this time, Councilor Murphy would like to go in support of this project. Due to agreed community process, this proposal has a lot of support from both direct abutters and the community as a whole. And this is why Secretary Murphy was proud to support and write a letter of support for this project. Thank you.
Any of the elected officials' office on before we get to public testimony? No, okay, just a quick, I know there's a few people that want to speak. If you could briefly tell us if you're in support of opposition and don't repeat information. So we'll go to Minor.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, mine apprised, representing the carpenters union, on behalf of hundreds of other union carpenters that have worked throughout the year, all request support.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Nicole, you can briefly tell us if you're in support of opposition. Give your name and address.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nicola Keane. I live at.
I live at 35 Beechbaum Street. I have been a resident of Brighton since I was 26. I bought a condo shortly after I graduated college and had that condo for eight years. I sold eight years ago and I've rented for eight years close to Oak Square. I live in, I work in Newton Corner. I am in firm accusal of this project. What they have put together is a fantastic project, but it is not the right project for this site. We are, I'm part of the Oak Square Native Association and you have seen.
What are you doing in the kitchen, Smidgen? Mute, Jessica, those weren't speaking.
Yeah.
That should look better. Nicole, you can just briefly sum up some of that.
Madam Chairman, you were spot on to say there seems to be a fair amount of opposition and letters submitted. We've worked really hard to get the word out and I personally have flyered the neighborhood, spoke to residents, spoke to people who don't know about this project. As I said, I work in Newton Corner and I am very, very concerned about the precedent of density that is happening in this neighborhood. And as I said, I am a renter. I do no longer own.
Okay, John?
Yes, my name is John Cusack. I'm a resident of 186 Washington Street. This has gone through a very long process. It represents a dramatic improvement from the initial proposal. Seventy units of homeownership with 65% owner occupancy is something that I think Brighton needs to see more of. The public safety aspect of the added crosswalk is very much needed and I'm in firm support of this project. Thank you.
Megan?
Hi, I'm Megan Thrasher at 19 Tip Top. I am in firm opposition to the project. It's just too large for the single family zone and it needs further review. They're going to have to, it's such a large project that they're going to have to dig down two stories of an undeveloped wooded hillside. And then they're going to need construction vehicles and how do they plant the larger trees without harming the trees to remain?
Gotcha, thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair, do you want me to keep going? About nine more raised hands.
I will split the difference in, let's say, five.
Madam Chair, members of the board, real quick, Paul Sullivan, City Council, large metal barry, contacted to go record support.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes, my name is Harvey Yee. I'm 29 Brighton Road here in Brighton, Oak Square. Right now, you have heard a lot of people talk about, right now, that area is eyesore. We need additional housing and the fact that the unit, the proposal, has three bedrooms and two bedrooms, which will hopefully allow families that want to live and stay in the fostered community with this project. So I'm in full support of this project.
Thank you. Hank Yee?
Hi, hello, my name is Hank. I'm a resident of 99 Tremont Street, a building adjacent to the lot being discussed. Standing firm opposition of the proposal. I think the 70-unit addition to this already pretty crowded neighborhood is a dramatic increase in, you know, in the already crowded neighborhood. It's going to significantly impact the already, you know, pretty bad traffic and noise in the neighborhood. And I also want to point out that, you know, I'm not sure what robust neighborhood engagement process that is being discussed. I talked to a number of neighbors in the building and not fast forward well with projects until probably February or March of this year. So we weren't able to given the opportunity to participate in any kind of discussions.
Thank you. Okay, I'll keep going. Sandra?
Hi, my name is Sandra Sebastian. I live at 42 Magic Street. I want to stress my opposition to this project. I feel that the actual project, just 70 units, is too dense. I'm hearing a lot about affordable housing and a lot about how these three-bedroom units, condos that they're going to sell for families, well, three-bedroom units, three of them is not going to bring families back into the neighborhood.
Thank you. All right, I think we're getting a good idea of people's support or opposition. Are there any other questions from the board?
I think you do have someone from the neighborhood group, just to.
I'm sorry?
I was just going to suggest you have someone from the neighborhood group on as well.
I don't know who's.
Madam, Madam Chair, members of the board, that's Annabella Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. She has her hands raised to testify as well.
Well, let's make that the last one. Annabella, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, Austin IAG member on this project. The Brighton Austin Improvement Association voted to support this project. They have presented to the BIA on several occasions. We did support it because they did change it to homeownership, which is much needed in our community with a good affordable rate and the open space that they're providing and cleaning up the site so that it'll be a good-looking site. I do understand that the neighbors in the Oak Square area are resistant to development and we do hear their concerns, but we do think this is much needed development with the homeownership. And the IAG, for the most part, in priority, has been supporting this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, any other questions from the board? Okay, will that may have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of here. After hearing the community, the pros and cons, I still believe that the creation of housing opportunities for the community homeownership is important. And I was pleased to see that there are 12 IDP units, especially including two and three bedrooms. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. With that, I'm going to ask for a 15-minute break.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Board.